And I was going to try.
I got some of that in really serious.
But they're not even showing us that we set up my password.
Yes, you can check your computer and have it down.
Oh, you had it?
I'm so sorry about you.
It's late.
Oh, okay. How are you, Sandra? Are you feeling great?
Okay. I would like to call the city council meeting to order for May the first, two thousand and twelve. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Boudreaux?
Here.
Kenyon?
Here.
Petty?
Here.
Tennant? Farrell?
Here.
Adam?
Here.
Lewis?
Gray?
Here.
Mayor Jordan?
Here. Would you join me in signing the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party, its fans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, on the mayor's announcements, proclamations, and recognitions, I have Alana Massey and the Spring International Students from the University of Arkansas. They're representing Brazil, Indonesia, Mexico, Palestine, and Thailand. They stand to be recognized tonight. Thank you all for being here. I have a proclamation I would like to read for the municipal clerks week. I'd like to present this to Sandra Smith. Okay? And it reads, whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of the local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas municipal clerks continuously strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, Providence County, and international professional organizations, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk of Fayetteville. Now therefore, I, Lionel Jordan, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, do hereby proclaim the week of April twenty-ninth through May the fifth, two thousand and twelve, as Municipal Clerk Week in appreciation of Fayetteville Municipal Clerks, Sandra Smith, and to all municipal clerks for their vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent and witness thereof. I have her into set my hand and cause to seal the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas to be affixed on the twenty-ninth day of April, two thousand and twelve. Sandra? All right. Yes, any comments from the council?
Yes, Mayor, I just want to say anybody out there that has ever had anything to do with the city, or if you ever endeavor to run for public office, that's when you will realize how important the city clerk and staff is. They make our jobs a lot easier. They anticipate, they're just wonderful. So Sandra, you and your staff, thank you once again.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Sandra.
I'll just ditto that.
Well said.
All right. We have the city council meeting presentation of reports and discussion items. We have the first quarter financial report, two thousand and twelve. Paul?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm happy to report that the first quarter was very positive for the City of Fayetteville. Sales tax collections were up in excess of eight percent compared to last year. That equates to about four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars for the general fund over and above what our budget expectation was. Plus, building permits have been up, and they're up about forty thousand dollars so far this year. Everything else is about in line with our expectations. So that takes us up to pretty close to a half a million dollars already at the end of the first quarter that we're ahead of what we had projected. Two things, that means two things for us. We originally budgeted at a four hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollar deficit this year. It looks like we won't have to go into reserves by the end of the year, unless something catastrophic happens between now and the end of the year, which I don't foresee. Secondarily, with your approval, we had salary increases this year, and we said we had to have funds to fund ongoing costs, about nine hundred thousand dollars, to continue that in the future. We already have five hundred thousand dollars so far this year. It looks like we'll be comfortably able to do that. So that was a wise decision that was made for those salary increases. And we look comfortable going forward and being able to fund those. That's the general fund which we sent around. We show a little loss of about forty-five thousand dollars in the first quarter, but that's minimal and not uncommon in the first quarter because many expenditures take place early in the year. If we look a little further to a couple of other funds, as far as the parking fund is concerned, revenues are on with expectations are our expenditures, so it looks like we're on line for budget there. HMR taxes have been very strong again this year. We're up approximately fifteen percent compared to prior year. So that's looking pretty good, too. And of course, we use the HMR funds not only for the A and P Commission, but also to fund our Parks Development Fund. So that's good news. All in all, things look very positive for the city. As I'm looking at the Water and Sewer Fund, Solid Waste Fund, they're holding just about on expectation. So it does look positive at the end of the first quarter going into the rest of the year. Hopefully, things will stay positive for the entire year, but we're off to a very good start. And I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
I have a question for you, Paul. What's the Dixon Street area up for the year in HMR taxes thereabouts?
Approximately. Approximately seven percent, I think it was the last time I checked it, Mayor.
I want the council to hear that loud and clear that the Dixon Street area is up about seven percent in HMR taxes.
It's been up about seven percent since we began tracking it compared to prior periods. There was actually, after I analyzed it, only one month in that period, in the eighteen-month period, where we were actually down after we had all of the data in. And that was last February.
Okay, and you might want to talk just a little bit about the Water and Sewer Bond Ratings.
Oh. Yes, we're very happy that our bond rating come in at double A plus, which was an increase in the bond ratings compared to, compared to the last time that they were rated. In today's economy, with bonds being, with bond ratings being cut, I thought that was very, very positive for the city. That's our sewer and water bonds. And again, it's an attestation to our conservative approach and how we try to keep reserve levels in the Water and Sewer Fund and the strength, the economic strength that the rest of the city shows. And I was very proud of that. I think that shows good fiscal management on behalf of the mayor, the administration, and certainly the council and your support, support on the budgets and our conservative ways that we've practiced for the last couple of years.
Thank you, council. That was very well done. Any questions for Paul on this? All right, thank you, Paul. All right, on the consent agenda, number one, approval of the April third, two thousand and twelve, and April seventeenth, two thousand and twelve, city council meeting minutes. Number two, McClellan Consulting Engineers Incorporated Task Order Number Eight, resolution to approve Task Order Number Eight with McClellan Consulting Engineers Incorporated in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars for plans, bidding, service, and construction administration of the airfield payment rehabilitation and striping Phase Two project, and to approve a budget adjustment of eighteen thousand dollars. Number three, David and Susan Drooding Settlement Agreement, resolution approving a settlement agreement with David and Susan Drooding concerning condemnation litigation filed as part of the Cato Springs Road Improvement Project in the total amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Number four, bid number twelve dash twenty-five Goodman and Goodman Incorporated, resolution approving contract for relocation of water and sewer mains along Garland Avenue with the low bidder Goodman and Goodman Incorporated in the amount of one million five hundred and seventy-five thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars with a project contingency of seventy-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, and to approve a budget adjustment. I will entertain a motion to...
Some move.
Second.
Approve the consent agendas red. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Okay, under unfinished business, number one, amend thirty-four point twenty-seven sale of municipally owned real property. An ordinance to repeal thirty-four point twenty-seven of the Code of Fayetteville and to enact a replacement thirty-four point twenty-seven sale of municipally owned real property of the Code of Fayetteville. I will entertain a motion to go to the third and final reading.
Some move, second.
We have motion to second to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
An ordinance repeal section thirty-four point two-seven of the Code of Fayetteville and to enact a replacement section thirty-four point two-seven, sale of municipally owned real property of the Code of Fayetteville.
Staff, have anything more on this? Okay, city council, I understand this has been through ordinance review?
Went through ordinance review, and we decided to, an ordinance review supported, made some changes to the original proposal that came from the city attorney's office, and so we felt like that it didn't make any major changes to the ordinance other than those that made it more consistent with our other ordinances regarding the notification time period and that sort of thing, so.
Any questions?
Just supported.
For anybody from the council? Okay, let's open it up for public comment. Everybody gets one turn at the microphone. Keep your comments directly to the chair, which would be me. And who will be first? Introduce yourself, please.
Fran Alexander, Fox Center Road. First, I'd like to say hello, Justin. You and I have not ever exchanged any issues yet. That's how long it's been since I've really nagged at y'all. And I want to thank Matthew for putting this later than the voting on it last time on the second reading. I didn't come last time because I was really hacked off at y'all. I had offered to, I had offered to come and help discuss this in December, and nobody told me it was going to be on the ordinance review in March, and so, or whenever you did it. So I figured that whatever I said wouldn't have no impact, and so I just decided not to come on the second one. But I've calmed down a bit, so I wanted to come on the third one. And the reason I have come, and I know that ordinance review, I wish I'd been there for that, would have talked about this, especially with Brenda's input because she was there for when it was originated. But I want to reiterate some things that, Justin was not here that evening in December when we, when I came and spoke to it before. So I want to reiterate some things to make sure you know what you're doing, mainly because I don't think any of you have probably ever been through the process and had it affect you personally. And so these things that I'm going to point out, I hope you will understand where I'm coming from on that. Number one, under the A, it says the city may sell real property only after the city council has passed a resolution expressly authorizing this sale. Now, on the original, it said it may offer a piece of property for sale. There's a big difference between offering a piece of property for sale by resolution and saying that the city may sell. So that is a step with public input problems, and I want you to be aware of that because if you're trying to keep the sunshine shining, this is a point where the public will be kind of yanked into consciousness if they suddenly realize that there is a resolution to sell rather than a resolution to offer for sale. The other thing I want to point out to you is in this new resolution, paragraph C, you've changed the original from thirty days to fifteen. The reason I pointed out in December that thirty days was put into the ordinance in the first place is because of the awareness of the issue of property that a neighborhood may not want to see sold. Takes a while before that information reaches everybody. And I just didn't think fifteen days was long enough. I know that you're trying to expedite matters, and that was the reason for probably shortening it. But once again, this is public input issue. I want you to be aware of that, what you're doing when you, when you deal with public input. And in the old ordinance, and this is missing here in this new amendment, so I don't know if you've got the old ordinance in front of you or not, probably not, but if you do, I want to point out to you that in the first paragraph of A, it says that, no, I'm sorry, in C, it talks about two simultaneous and independent appraisals. In your new one, you have no appraisals. Now, I would think that the buying and selling of property, whoever's buying and whoever's selling would warrant appraisals. After your experience with the drootings, and certainly with the A and P Commission not having an appraisal for the old post office building before purchasing on the drooding side the right-of-way and on the post office side the building, I would think that appraisals would be utmost in your mind, especially after what we've been through with those issues. And so it doesn't really matter if you're selling public property. An appraisal is very valuable if you're going to know the real worth to the public of that particular piece of property. And as I described last time, I spoke to you about this. This was based on a piece of property that could have been commercial or residential, and the value of it to the public was going to be lost without those appraisals to draw the public attention to what that property really was. And so I want you to know that if you pass this tonight, you're passing something that says there's no appraisal necessary. Excuse me?
Well, it says we can, well, we'll...
You can request. Yes, I know, and at that point, I'd like to, I'm sorry, Lionel, I should've...
That's okay.
I should have pointed out that you are not who is always going to sit here, and Lionel's not the one that's always going to be mayor. And these, this was written because of, in a previous administration and in a previous situation, and with previous board because of problems that happened at that point in time. So I think appraisals on both sides, the buying and the selling, are pretty important. Number, the next one is the certified mail. Is it really going to break the city to send it certified versus first class? If you send it certified, at least you know they got it. If you send it first class, anybody can claim they never heard word one about the issue. And I really, you know, I'll pay it if you want me to, if it's really going to break the city to send certified mail. My gosh. I don't know how that delays anything. Number three, the new amendment says prominently displayed signs on the property. And I went into strong detail last time about how the definition of prominently displayed is pretty nebulous, and it's pretty subjective. And if you cannot see these signs in the entrances and exits of a particular area, then you're not going to be able to get out and read them. And so that was the reason that this prominence, it was pointed out in the old ordinance. And let's see. Number two, D two, that's certified signs. Okay. Number E, in E, paragraph E, you are now doing away with bids. If you're selling a piece of property, I see no place in the new amendment that has anything to do with taking bids. And traditionally, if you're buying or selling, I mean, if you're selling something, especially public property, I would think that a bidding process would be in order. So you have zapped that in this new one. And paragraph H is exemptions. And I said last time you were having a lot of trouble with right-of-way and going through this whole ordinance and all of that. So I know that you were tangled up with it, and I wanted to know, and I wanted Kit to try to explain to me why H, paragraph four, the dedication of real property to the Arkansas State Highway Commission shall be exempt from the requirements of this section and may be dedicated by the city council resolution. I wanted to know why that would not have covered that situation that Mr. Jerkins was having over that right-of-way. Anyway, once again, you know, I want to share my vast painful experience with why this ordinance came to be in the first place, and don't think you should throw it all out. And, oh, there was one other thing. It talks about the newspaper ads. It doesn't say how many ads or when they're to run. And as you know, and this is public awareness again, something like this, these are both rezonings. This thing over here, this long job here, is a bond offering. Well, it takes a real dedicated citizen to read these things, number one. And maybe if they are displayed enough and long enough, they might see them. So without putting how many ads and when they're going to run, I think you're running into some more problems about public awareness. And this is a very important thing because this is public land. It's not owned by the council. And while I trust you guys, I don't always feel that way about everybody that's up there. So, any questions of me?
Any questions for Fran?
Thanks for trusting us, Fran.
Oh, yeah, well, it's taken a while, Bobby.
I have a general question, I guess.
Is the public, is speaking?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, let's say everything more public.
Yeah. Any other, anybody else in the public? Okay, seen that, I'll bring it back to council, sorry, y'all. Yes, sir?
Well, I, first of all, thank you to Fran for coming and asking those questions. And I think, so, the way I understand it is they have, there's an interest in creating more flexibility, essentially, so that there is an opportunity to exchange land between cities more easily rather than having to go through the process of getting an appraisal and those kind of things. But the council, the way this is written, the council could still, and it's what we changed in the ordinance review, was the council could still request an appraisal in the case of, you know, if it seemed like it was appropriate. I do think, I would like to also have an explanation of legally the difference, which I think was a good point, well, they're all good points, but the city may sell or city may offer to sell. And I guess what does that look like? At what point, when it comes to the council, what's the situation when it says the city may sell?
Okay, only the city council has authority to sell real estate of the city. The old ordinance required steps before you could ever get to that location. So you had to have at least two meetings, if not longer. And of course, with, because the first meeting would have to be after thirty days of advertisement, notification, everything, before you even got to the council about whether or not you wanted to offer anything for sale. This one would give you the right, after fifteen days of notification, to actually decide whether or not you want to sell. You did change the requirement here in the ordinance review that says the city council shall determine whether the property should be rezoned or appraised prior to its sale. So that's certainly something, you wanted that written down to make sure the city council would realize in every case that this is something that they might want to consider. The reason why I think it really didn't make too much sense to keep this requirement that you sell to the highest bidder is because occasionally you might have other reasons besides cash about why you would want to sell to a particular bidder or a particular person that might want to buy this property. It might be a property that this person is going to preserve. It might be ecologically important to have at least a portion of the property preserved and not all used. Might be needed for economic development, bringing in new jobs and things like that. So it's not always just whoever's willing to give the top dollar and for them to use the property however they want. That's not necessarily always going to be the best interest of the citizens of Fayetteville. And so that's why this does not require a bidding process, and it doesn't require two separate appraisals to get to what the city council would then set the lowest minimum price. If you want, I can answer a couple of other questions that Fran raised. She talked about certified mail. And certainly you could require certified mail. It doesn't require a whole bunch of extra money for that. The one problem with certified mail is that if you're not home, when the mailman comes by, you can't get it. You have to go down to the post office. They'll leave you a little note. They say, "Come to the post office and get your certified mail." In some ways, and if somebody refuses it, then they never get it. And so I actually think first-class mail is much more likely to actually get to the adjacent property owners, especially in a timely manner. So I think it really makes more sense to have first-class mail, which usually does get to the property owner and gets to them more quickly. We required a single newspaper ad this time. Last time, there were three or four consecutive newspaper ads per week, which also added another month to the whole process of trying to sell some property. And this time, we only require a single newspaper ad. I think that it probably makes sense to have that newspaper ad. And I should note, as I did to the ordinance review committee, this is the same kind of requirements that we have to rezon property. This is, this is basically saying, it's the same procedure with the signs, with the letters to adjoining property owners, with one ad in the paper that we use for rezoning, for vacations, for all kinds of other legally required notifications that we do. And this just makes it the same kind of notification that we already have and have been using for many, many years to notify adjacent property owners when something might change on property close to them. So I think it makes sense to have this the same. Fran also asked, why did this one exemption not cover this proposed sale to the Arkansas Western Gas? In fact, it's on the agenda right now. If you read the exemption, it says, well, you can sell it to the Arkansas State Highway Department. Well, Arkansas Western Gas is not the highway department. One thing that showed me why I needed to bring this back to you is that through the years, we've had to do exemptions to this time and time and time again. And in fact, this whole ordinance has only been used one time without exemptions. One time in ten years. And then we had a single bidder, and the process took a very long time, and we finally got it sold. But it's shown me as a city attorney that this is not a very workable process, not if you have to have many more exemptions than you've ever had at work. So I think that the changes the ordinance review committee made to make sure the notification was going to cover all three kinds, newspaper, signs, and letters, to bring it in line with the rezoning requirements, and to specifically talk about that you all should look at how this property should be zoned and how and whether or not it should be appraised prior to making any sale, I think that you have covered the kind of issues that were presented in the first place, but made it much more... but made it much more workable and also made it where the city council has the authority to consider something besides just dollars when it comes to selling property.
So can you clarify, I mean, there is a difference in the decision points between the words "offer for sale" and then "sell"? It seems like so that...
Absolutely.
So the way it's written right here is that council would have to give approval for the staff to sign on the dotted line, basically.
For the mayor to sign.
For the mayor to sign. And then, but, and it's all, the offers have been made and everything before it would come to council, the way this is written.
It could very well be.
Okay.
And then you could decide whether or not you like that offer. You could decide, well, maybe we need to get it appraised before we accept the offer. You don't have to work, you can always table a resolution. You don't have to work on it that night if there's some issue that you want to think about. You might think, well, maybe this is not zoned properly. Let's get it rezoned before we sell. You don't have to go forward on the first night it would be presented before you. You all have tabled resolutions many times, and you can do it in the future. It just means you don't have to. You don't have to have two separate council meetings, one to consider about whether you're going to offer it at all, and then one to finally decide to authorize the mayor to sign the deal.
Good?
Yeah, thank you.
Bobby?
Kit, you just said this, but forgive me, I'm not a youngster anymore. On the "may sell after resolution" opposed to "may offer", what, what'd you say we're talking about in time or potential amount of time? If the scenario came where we wanted to sell a piece of property? If it said, "may offer" as opposed to "may sell"? What's, how much time are you talking about? You mentioned something, but I'm sorry, I...
It would certainly, if you're only, if you're going to make an offer, in reality, you could make an offer to sell at a certain price. And at that point, that would be selling the property if the other person accepted. What we like to do is bring you something where the other side's already signed so that you know that if you make an offer, you've got a contract. It's not just that you're offering and seeing whether or not they're going to sell. And that's what happened to A and P Commission. They had no document in hand from the supposed private person. And instead, so they could not consummate it. That's not the way we like to do it. If you have a contract that's come before you, whether it's to buy or, I mean, sell property or whatever or to do services for the city, we have a signed contract for you so you know that if you make the decision, that decision stands. And so that's really what this would be too. Now, you could make an offer to sell, and if you've actually already approved that, that would be the same thing in reality, so that if they accepted the offer, that would be the contract.
That's kind of the way I was looking at that. But really, there wasn't a lot of difference between if the thing looks like it was going to go forward. That's all I got there.
Sure. I guess I'd just like to say that I do think, I have a concern about that because it seems like the council, the community should have a chance to decide if it should even go up for sale, not just, because once there's been an offer and there's all that work involved, there's a momentum behind it. There's an inertia. And it seems like first, we should figure out, well, is it even something that we want to open up for sale? And then, and then it can be flexible from there, but, so. I'm sorry, that's just a statement. Thank you.
Well, first, I'd say that I think most of these changes are okay, but since the original intent of the ordinance is to shed sunlight on things and help prevent favoritism in the community and slick deals, I do want to be sensitive of that intent. And especially, I think that appraisals are an important tool for doing that. And it makes me wonder if this ordinance wouldn't be stronger if we required appraisals for transaction amounts of twenty thousand or more. I just chose twenty thousand to ask that question because we allow the mayor to execute agreements, not real estate agreements, but agreements that are smaller than twenty thousand dollars without council approval. So it just seems like there's some precedent there. But I wonder if a policy like that wouldn't make this ordinance stronger. I guess I'd make that a motion. We can discuss it if somebody wants to second it.
I'll second it.
I will say, the mayor, there are different bidding rules under twenty thousand, but it doesn't mean that there is a contract that comes before you for nineteen thousand that doesn't come to the city council. You still have to authorize the mayor to sign it. It's just that different bidding rules require under state law. Either it has to be bid, or the bidding must be weighed by the city council if it's over twenty thousand. But it's still going to be brought before you.
Right, bids and contracts are one of the many things that the mayor might spend money on, right? That might have different rules under twenty thousand. But then there are also, if the mayor needs to buy five laptops, he doesn't have to come to the city council to authorize a purchase if it's less than twenty thousand dollars.
Well, this mayor usually does, but I don't really have to.
And we would expect the council to normally require an appraisal during a real estate agreement, but this is just putting it in stone.
I can't speak for other mayors.
And we can't speak for other councils.
Well, now we're talking about his motion, but not back to the original. However, in response to his motion, I, as far as setting a value on it, you've got to know what it's worth. So you, that doesn't, I don't know how that would work. If you set twenty thousand, well, you're going to have to have an appraisal to know whether it's worth twenty thousand.
Well, I think in the scenario just described, someone would be coming to us with a request. That was one of the scenarios that were just described, and then the council would be considering the sale.
In that case, we would probably ask for an appraisal.
Right.
And we had that opportunity, but, you know, I feel like that the idea of appraisal is not, it really didn't even go back to the original concern that, I don't recall that being a big part of this original issue that Fran and we were all involved in. But, you know, I still go back to the idea, and I won't, I won't support that because the council can determine whether or not appraisal needs to be made because this whole discussion started most recently because of trying to buy the, or trying to to sell the property for the utility. And I did question why we just don't add another exemption at the ordinance review meeting. But, but that again, you know, having the appraisal again complicates that. And the whole reason we're making amendments to this is to try to uncomplicate that process but still maintain our ability to watch dog, to some extent, any property out there that the administration might, not this one, but might decide, you know, is worth selling. And, and, you know, so, I mean, I think a lot of things are very good here, but I think we've kept the things in here, or I wouldn't have supported it, that still gives us that safety net or provides us that ability to kind of keep our eyes out if something does come along that we really do possibly need to consider for a public use or something else. And as far as, well, all right, that's to that one. I'll address after we deal with that much, and then I'll address the other one.
What other comments do we have about the motion?
So Matthew's motion makes sense to me immediately because it adds some consistency, I think, to what happens. But I guess my question, I just want to be clear on this. Ten years from now, if you're not the mayor, and we have...
I can assure you, ten years from now...
Ten weeks from now, ten minutes from now, or whatever, that another mayor is here and, for whatever reason, sees a small valued property and just wants to push it through quickly without anybody really dealing with it. What is the safety net that you're saying? That would keep that from happening if it was a ten thousand dollar piece of property?
Obviously, there's no safety net because the city council can change the ordinance at any time they want to. State law says that city council can sell the property. Obviously, there are duties of the city council to be good conservators of the city property and the city finances. I can tell you, when I was on the council before we had this, when we were going to sell some property, it usually was a big issue and lots of discussion ensued. Never was rushed into. We discussed it a lot before we ever had this ordinance. This ordinance is also not here when that other sale of property that was questioned was not sold because the city council said, wait a minute, we think that we need to have more information. We don't want to be rushed into anything. And so they did not, in fact, authorize the sale. And in fact, then one of the aldermen asked and got this ordinance passed. So it's not like that in the past, the city has done something and made a rush sale that we all regret now, wish that it hadn't happened. And the one problem with requiring an appraisal, number one, that's money. Money you're not going to get back. And number two, and it might be for a piece of property you don't want to, don't need to appraise. Maybe you just already bought it, maybe there's a recent appraisal some other time, but not too long ago. And you have other reasons besides money to sell it, like bringing in new business or something like that. And if you want an appraisal, that's going to slow up the process too because obviously it takes an appraiser a considerable period of time to do an appraisal. One of the reasons I wanted to do this was to empower the city council again to use its good judgment and not, and try to release you from the straitjacket of the current ordinance that required so many different steps and so many things to do. Like I say, it's only been used one time without exemptions. It has not worked.
So if there's a patch of dirt in East Fayetteville that we know is not worth very much money, but whoever owns it says it's worth thirty thousand dollars, his motion then would kick in, and we would have to get an appraisal on it because of the twenty thousand dollar thing.
Yeah, if you wanted to sell, if it was a piece of Fayetteville, City of Fayetteville property, might be very small, might be very tiny, but somebody else wanted to put it on their yard or something, you know, you might very well have to have an appraisal and pay money for it to do it before you can sell it.
It should still have that option, whether or without this motion, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm clear, thank you. Took me a while to get to it.
Yeah, me too.
I'm feeling old.
Yeah, mayor, I was just going to say, yeah, we'd still have the option either case. And I think we're all pretty well familiar with the property. And like I say, anytime the city engages in any transaction, it's usually a front-page deal. So I think first-class mail suffice there too. So I wouldn't be in support of Matthew's mandating that we have to do the appraisal as opposed to letting it be an elective process by the council.
Now, this is a different part of this, so I'm going to open it up for public comment on this amendment.
So it's requiring that...
It's making it mandatory.
Mandatory, over twenty thousand. Appraisals.
I didn't think I was going to get to talk again. What a chance. The appraisal, you know, I think you need this discussion maybe separate from this amendment because of the buying and the selling and when an appraisal should fit in. Kit keeps pointing out that it's only been used once without exemptions. That once possibly was very, very important. You know, I just, I just don't understand why you don't see the value in the situation being different than when you're sitting here and you are the council that's going to decide whether it's appraised or not. And maybe that comes from twenty-five years of talking to this council. But it's a situation that can change. And by the council being in charge of the offer and the resolution and the sale and the appraisals and the bids, where does the public get to say, wait a minute? I want to know what this property's worth. I want you to know what it's worth to me. And so that's, that's this delicate balance. And I understand what y'all are going through. I know it's complicated, and I understand the exceptions. You know, I would, I'm glad Kit answered about H four because it looked like to me you could add a few lines in there about right of ways or something just to make it not so cumbersome. But once again, that's just me. Anybody else?
All right, thank you, Fran. All right, any other comments on this amendment? Yes?
I'll just say, you know, I think it's a good idea to have something that kicks in at a certain amount. And twenty thousand, I think, is a good threshold, so, and I'll say why. It's just because an appraisal for a twenty thousand dollar piece of property is probably only going to be a couple hundred bucks. An appraisal for a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar property is going to be fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars. You know, the appraisal scales, the cost of an appraisal scales with the complexity of the neighborhood or the location of a property and with the worth of the property. So I don't think, I think twenty thousand dollars is a good threshold to require something. You know, if you can imagine an offer, and I know a future council might have this exact same conversation about a particular property, but if you can imagine that you want to sell a piece of property to a nonprofit at a reduced rate, then the appraisal, if you know the property's worth more than twenty thousand dollars, like a centrally located piece of land, you have to justify why you're giving that value that the taxpayers hold to a nonprofit, to a single entity. And if you're going to sell it to a developer, then you need to be able to negotiate. And that's the exact same conversation that a future council might have. But, you know, this, I think, I don't remember who said it right at the beginning of this discussion, but it sets up consistent expectations for what's going to be required in the process.
Okay. Any other comments on this amendment? Am I good? Okay. Shall the amendment pass? Senator, please call the roll.
Boudreaux?
No.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tennant?
No.
Farrell?
No.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
No.
Gray?
No.
Go ahead, fail.
Okay.
So I would like to offer another amendment.
Okay.
I would like to suggest that we add language stating that the city may offer for sale real property only after the, well...
Just change that word?
Yeah, just change that word. And then I do have a, so I'd like to do that.
What do you want to change word to, Sarah?
She wants to add "offer to"...
I want, I would like for the, well, you can help, you can help me with the language. What I would like to have happen is the citizens to have a chance to help all of us decide whether or not a piece of property should be even offered for sale. Because there are two situations I see. One, where a, someone is interested in city property, and they would come and say, we want to buy that. And there's an offer made. There's another situation where city staff is doing, you know, working and so on, and they recognize that this piece of property could be sold because we're not using it or it's, there's, you know, there's another use for it, or there's another city that needs it, or whatever it is. So there's kind of this offering it for sale and putting it up for sale. And then there's responding to a request. And to me, we should be a part of the discussion on whether it should even be available or even if it's an option. And the reason is, once all that work goes into someone getting, making an offer, and there's all kinds of work behind that and putting together all the forms, there, like I said, there's an inertia. There's, there's, it's hard for citizens to push back against. And to me, it should be much more a discussion on whether or not it should be even offered. And then, to me, again, there should be a chance for us to approve that it is sold, it is sold for whatever the final offer was. And we always have that. So those two steps should be, so maybe it is just offering to sell.
Do you necessarily mean that you want to have two city council meetings before you make any sale?
Couldn't, could we accomplish that by just changing that from "may sell after resolution" to "may offer after resolution"?
May offer to sell.
If you, if you change it to "may offer," Sarah, that's the only change. I'll second your amendment.
Yeah, so I think that that's what I would like to see.
So we want to change wording to "may offer to sell", is that correct?
I can tell you from a legal point of view, if the city council passes a resolution to offer to sell a piece of property for a set amount of money, if it's accepted, that's a contract. You have to sell. You have sold. You know, because if there's an, if there's an offer and acceptance, that's an agreement, it's sold.
Okay, so my, I'm envisioning this situation for, I don't know, for some reason that if we have a piece of property and we want to open it up for sale, then this council should decide that, even if there's no one else who has made an offer to us.
Yes, you don't have to, you know, the city council has complete authority when it comes to the real property. You could make, if you, except for under the old ordinance, you couldn't. But in this particular ordinance, you'd be able to say, we think this is surplus property. It looks like it might be good for commercial or residential or whatever use, and therefore, we're going to offer to sell it. Now, you could say that under this one. You couldn't say it under the old one without doing a whole bunch of other steps. But you could say on this one to do that. You couldn't sell it until you went through all the rest of the steps.
Yeah.
And notification and everything else. On the other hand, if you offer it for a particular price...
No, I don't want to offer...
I think what she's saying, "may offer to sell", but not a price attached to it, correct?
Yeah, just "may offer it for sale".
But what if somebody then comes to the city council and say, I would like to buy that property? You all haven't been offering it, but I would like to buy it. And city staff recommends it, says, we don't really need it, we think this is a good use for it. Would you want to be able to accept that offer? Would you want to be able to accept that offer?
Come back to the council though, wouldn't it?
It'd have to come to the council.
Yeah, right, so then it would come back.
Yes, but if somebody just came to the council and said, I'd like to buy it, are you gonna make them have two meetings then? Or just a single meeting and a single resolution?
So this is a, yes, because to me, the community should discuss whether it's even for sale at all.
And they could do that anytime, whether somebody brings an offer, or they could say, we don't think the city should sell this property, period.
Right.
At no price.
Exactly. And then, if there is an offer made, then it should come back to the council. And we can discuss if that's a valid price. Maybe we need to have an appraisal. Maybe it needs to be rezoned. To me, there's two steps.
I'm not absolutely sure.
But I don't understand why that's different. I don't, maybe, maybe Bobby, you're saying, just changing that to the city may offer to sell, how is that?
A resolution.
Yeah, that seems like that's, that's all that is doing. And, and then before we said, on other things that we do, it always comes back to the council. It's, it's just part of that process. I guess I'm not, I'm not sure why you're confused.
Well, oftentimes, city council will be presented with a contract, and you either say yes or no on the contract. It doesn't come back to you twice. Whether it be this one million, seven hundred thousand dollar contract that we just approved on consent or a lesser amount, this is something that has been prepared by staff, presented to the city council, and it's up to you to decide whether or not you want to accept it. And I don't understand why real estate is not similar to that so that you can make a decision in one night if you want to, or you can delay it, however you prefer. And that's why this originally read that you may sell it. And I, I don't wanna confuse you or, or... But if you pass a resolution to offer to sell property at a set price, and it's accepted, you have sold it. It will never come back to city council.
Okay, so to me, the word offer allows for those two paths. One, if no, no one has come to us and we're all thinking this is surplus property and the, and so the citizens should have a chance to help us decide that. The other path is that someone has come to the city and said, we wanna buy this. Again, this should be the process, but the word offer allows two paths.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, so that, I, I can understand what you're saying, so we can make it so that if somebody actually presents an offer, you can decide it on that night after we go through all the notification process.
Right.
Okay.
That's kind of what I...
Okay.
Brenda?
How is that different than just going back and using the way the wording now? I mean, why not just go back to the, just put the A, just keep the same A that's in the old one under the new one? A municipally owned real estate, real property shall not be offered for sale without the express authorization by resolution of the city council. The city council should determine whether the property shall be rezoned prior to offering it for sale. Basically, that, just that first sentence. I mean, why is there such a big difference in that?
I don't think it really is.
And why not just go back to that, the way it was originally worded, rather than trying to come up with a new one? If that's, if that's what your intent is.
When you say the way, okay.
So...
Why not just go back, why not just make amendment to go back to the original one?
I guess, to me, there are two situations that, that, like I said, there's two different situations that I'm, I get, I, it makes me nervous that, that the city would decide that surplus land is just for sale without, without having a council meeting. And I guess, maybe that, maybe, and then, so I'm not comfortable with the mayor and the staff and everyone just, and going out and doing all this stuff and, and opening up bids or, or opening up for sale without first having a council meeting.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't even think of doing that.
Well, that's what I mean. I don't know that, that you wouldn't, but I don't know if the language states that.
I'd like to simply move that, that we go back to municipally owned real, that we amend this. Section A, to municipally owned real property shall not be offered for sale without the express authorization by resolution of the city council.
Well, I already have one amendment.
Well, did you actually make that amendment?
Yeah, and Bobby said it, I believe.
Okay.
So if, if you withdraw that and go with Brenda's, I can do that, or however you all want.
I've not understood her amendment yet.
Well, I think that the intent is, is, is there. I'm, the lang, like I said, the language is not as, I mean, it is important, but my, my point is, I want, it's, I want the, all of us to discuss it before, I guess, in the situation where there's surplus land that the city can't just go and get, go through the process and get offers and so on before first bringing it to the council. And so I think maybe what you're suggesting there, the city council, and without the express approval of, but... So, yes, I did ma, I did make an amendment or suggest amendment. I don't say offer, but I don't know that it makes a big enough difference.
It'd have the same meaning.
Yeah.
I just never quite...
Sorry, I would, the more I think about it, I think one of the things that was throwing us off a little bit was, and Kit said it a minute ago, was he said, a set price. And, and he said, if a set price is offered and, and we had, had offered the, the, we just offered it by resolution, he said, we would have to accept that. Well, I think the way I was thinking about it initially was, there wouldn't be a set price. We would just offer it.
Right.
But when we go back and think about what Kit said, that, you know, if, if a resolution comes up, we don't have to act on that resolution, just like Brenda pointed out a moment ago. We can wait again, and there's, I don't think any city property is sold without, or any, I can't speak for a fifteen cent deal, but anything significant of city property is not sold without coming before this council. So with that, I'm gonna withdraw my second on that. I think we can live with that first part without amending that.
Okay, now we're back to the amendment, and I guess I will ask if there is a second on her.
So I don't know if there is a formal amendment, because I, I guess I'm struggling with the wording because there, I'm, I'm not, I'm still not comfortable with this idea that the city could have, the, but by the time someone has come to this council with an offer and, and, and with, you know, paperwork, and they've got a plan in place, and they have the vision in place, that's struggle for citizens to push back against. And so the, it's important for this council to discuss in a public forum whether or not even to think about and consider to sell surplus city property. So I don't know how we can put that in there.
Well, that's what it says in the original, right there. That's what you're saying. If you read that against that, what was original is what, that's what I was gonna say a while ago. You just wanna leave A, that's what I was trying to say a long time ago. Just, you're just, you're saying what is on right now.
Yeah, leave A in there.
Exactly what it says.
Well, we're gonna take it down.
So, no, the old A.
The old A.
The old A.
The old A.
You like the old A.
I'm becoming older by the minute.
I move to add the old A.
Here to here, and that's what you're saying.
So we're gonna leave the old A in.
Yes, I move to leave the old A in.
Isn't that what you said, Brenda?
And that would capture those two situations.
Okay.
I don't think I support that.
Okay, so that's your amendment. Your motion?
That's my motion.
Do we have a second? Okay, we don't have a second.
All right.
So now we're back to where are we? Back to...
To the ordinance.
To the ordinance as she is.
I just, I would like to say one thing, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I do not think the situation that we were in at one time would ever happen again because of this ordinance the way it's, is right now. We didn't have this in place when that happened. And the, the property that Kit is referring to is not that property. It was a sale of a little commercial piece we had, and it got really convoluted because of this ordinance. And I, I agree with Kit, you know, that there's been, the, the idea of exempting everything is just getting kind of ridiculous. And I, I would not have supported this if I'd not felt like that it kept the meat of everything in there. And I, I do believe that. So I, I, with that, I'll, I'll support it and move that we vote on it. Call the question.
Well, I think we're ready. We're on third and final ready. Yes, Bobby?
I just wanna say, Sarah, in reference to what you said a while ago about the public disclosure, you know, I, I think everybody's all for that, but on the other side of that, the public elects us and has confidence in us, obviously, to make decisions and to try to make the best decisions that we can for the city. So I think that we have to weigh both of those things when we think about this, and I'm ready to vote, Mayor.
Okay, anybody else? All right, Saunders, would you please call the row?
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
No.
Gray?
Yes.
Okay, now we have a public hearing we're gonna open up. Number one, Drive Incorporated Resolution to Approve the Application of Drive Incorporated for a Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity to Operate a Limousine Service. We are now opening up a public comm, public hearing.
I'll go for the public, if that's okay.
All right.
The police department received an application from Drive Incorporated for a certificate of public convenience and necessity. They're asking to open up a new limo company in town. They're, they currently have one limousine. They're asking for a maximum up to four. They have provided us a copy of their insurance and their financial statement, which the ordinance requires. And Mr. Farrell, it is twenty-four seven, not just Friday, Saturday, or Saturday, Sunday, whatever we was talking about last week.
Thank you, Keith.
That's all I have on this.
Okay, anybody else in public like to address us on this?
Hello, my name is Thompson Sulo, eleven thirty-four South Washington Unit B. I'm the president of Drive. Just wanted to make a brief statement. We've been kinda quiet. But essentially, we're, we're here before you applying for the, the certificate of public necessity and convenience. We feel we're, we're well due for that. We do have one limousine. We're just starting really small. I'm the sole driver, and it's a eight passenger in the back, ten passenger maximum, including the driver, so it's under ten thousand pounds. We've applied for both our state and federal operating authorities for both intra and interstate operations. So under that, we, we applied for an OP-1P authority with the government, which we will fall under the FMCSR safety regulations. And so we'll have the safety inspections, driver's logs, driver qualification files, and everything required from the government. In the application we submitted, we have the full one point five million dollar combined single limit, well in excess of the insurance regulations. Furthermore, we operate twenty-four seven, and we are doing contract work, so we hope to minimize the traffic footprint here in town. We're pretty discreet. We don't plan on standing on the street or on Dixon Street or anything like that. And so we mostly wanna operate through social media and our own private membership agreements. And so, other than that, I think we, we, there's a clear need, especially with the seasonality and, and transportation needs, and like I said, between us either taking cars off the road and then using our transportation and then supplementing that, you know, with, with normal operations, I think we're well set.
Any questions for council?
What kind of limo are you starting with?
It's an 'oh-six town car, hundred inch by Crystal Coach.
Great, good luck to you.
Terrific.
Anything?
Is that a motion to pass that?
Well, I, I wanna see if there's any more public comment before I close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Any other public want to speak on this issue? Okay, bring it back to the council. We have a resolution for you.
Mr. Mayor, I think that I'd like to suggest an amendment at the very end of section one for up to four limousines. I didn't know how many limousines that they were suggesting, so we can include that in section one.
We have a motion of second, up to four limousines, correct? Any comments or questions on that? Any comments from the public on that?
Yeah, I'd put in, like I said, we're, our long-term plan is only for up to four, and then nothing else would fall under any tax or other.
Okay. Anybody else? I'm gonna close the public comment. Any other questions or comments on the amendment? Okay, Saunders, would you please call the row?
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis? Yes.
Gray?
Okay, now on the resolution itself.
Maybe we pass the resolution.
Second.
A motion second, pass a resolution. Is there any comments on this? Okay, Saunders, would you please call the row?
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis? Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Okay, under new business, number one, Source Gas Arkansas Incorporated Resolution Authorizing Transfer of a Natural Gas Easement on the city property adjacent to Highway sixteen to Source Gas Arkansas Incorporated as part of the Highway sixteen improvement project. Who has this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. These are actually a couple of easements from Source Gas, Arkansas Western Gas along Highway sixteen, adjacent to the city shop property on Happy Hollow. And this is related to the Highway sixteen project of the widening that the highway departments will be doing, the city is participating in. These easements are directly adjacent to the right of way. And really technically, the, the gas company could install the lines in this location under their franchise agreement. This just formalizes that franchise agreement, so I'll answer any questions.
Any comments or questions from the council on this? All right, any public comment on this? See, now I'll bring it back to the council.
Need a motion of second.
I need a motion of second.
Second.
Have a motion of second to pass a resolution. Any final comments from the council on this? Saunders, would you please call the row?
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Okay, number two. Now, council has been, well, it looks like most of the students have left anyway. We were going to move this up one or two, but... It would appear that they've already...
They got impatient.
Okay.
We could, we could suspend the rules and, and move the street names up if you'd want to.
Let's do that.
Okay. And then we could put four first and three second on the agenda. Okay? I need a motion of second to get from...
Mark made a motion.
I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay, and we'll put four first and three second. Is that good?
That's good.
All right. Any comments on this? Saunders, would you please call the row?
Give me a second to get to a new sheet. Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. Street name change Bulldog Boulevard Resolution to change the name of portions of Stone Street and Clinton Drive to Bulldog Boulevard.
The school district has suggested that they asked to change the name of one of the roads surrounding the new, or the high school campus to Bulldog Boulevard. And after looking at how many addresses would have to be changed on different streets, this is the, seemed to be the best solution to come up with, to change the northern boundary of the school district property to Bulldog Boulevard. This stretch of road currently has two different names. It's, part of it is Stone Street, and then it has just the tail end of South Clinton Drive. So... But they're contiguous across the top of the campus there. There will, there, there's one residential address on this stretch that will be changed, and then there is the dress of the, the school district office. And the, the high school is currently addressed off of this section of road, but the new high school will be addressed off of Martin Luther King Boulevard. So that won't be affected one way or another once the new school is opened. Any questions for me?
What questions do we have? Okay, what public comment do we have on this?
Mayor?
Council?
My name is Nancy Allen. I'm Ward Two resident. The discussion that you had of the municipally owned land makes me remember how, how nice it is to stay home on Tuesday evenings. Anyhow, this item for the street name is not something that's terribly socially significant, but I think it'll be something, just be a lot of fun. And there are a lot of former Bulldogs around. I'm one of them. I see some former Bulldogs up there. Bulldogs that are, were going to have to leave for testing that were here, and Bulldogs in the future. And it would just be a fun thing to do. It would be a little bit difficult for a couple of people, but it would, they would get over it, and I... get over it, and I just think it would be a nice thing for you to do, and I hope you will. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
I'll turn it over to the bigwigs.
Okay. Okay. Who else? Hey, Susan.
I'm looking for the bigwigs. I'm Susan Heil, and I'm here on behalf of the Fayetteville Public Schools, and I hope you all will forgive our students, but it is a testing time. We're moving into finals, and a lot of them have to get home and get to their studies, as their parents would all very much prove of. So, but they were here to show their support of this name change, and they think it would be a lot of fun as well to have Bulldog Boulevard put on Stone Street. I think it goes, in my mind, in a lot of directions. One is visitors that come into town with the Bulldog name there, if they don't talk to anybody in town and they see the name there, they'll know immediately the community support that you have for our schools and that we all enjoy. For our alumni, it's just a reaffirmation of their Bulldog faith and their spirit and their schools, and they'll love to see it as well. But for our students, it's also an important thing for them to see that, because for them it will be a look at how their community supports them as a student and supports them in their environment. And that's very important, I think, and not all communities enjoy that kind of support that we do. And so I believe that's important as well. And the district supports this change and is looking forward to it and forward to the new school this fall. And overall, I just want to thank you, Mayor, and thank the council for the relationship that we enjoy as the public schools in the city. We, I think, believe, get along quite well, and I appreciate everything you do for the school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophie. Yes.
I just want to make a comment on what you said. When I used to ride basketball bus trips to other schools to play basketball, and when we weren't getting run to death by Coach Kretschmeyer, anytime a school had their name up on the street in front of the school, or whether they had like tiger tracks on the way to their stadium or something like that, it was, it was a little bit intimidating, because you knew that they had tremendous amounts of support, and you knew that the city was behind them. So I agree with you 100 percent. This is a good idea, maybe this will just add to the, to the presence that the Purple Dogs have.
Thank you.
Who else? Okay. Bring it back to the council. Final comments from the council. Bobby?
It's probably the oldest FHS graduate, other than the lady that got up and spoke in favor of this at first, our former councilman. We have two FHS 66 grads here. I'd probably move that we pass the resolution, Mayor.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. I, this is a wonderful thing. We do have a very good partnership with the Fayetteville Public Schools, and I want to thank you all for, for the friendship and action of the council that you've given me as a mayor. So with that, there's not any other final comments. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Okay. Number three. Street name change Stadium Drive Resolution to Change the Name of Portions of South Garland Avenue and all Paris Avenue to Stadium Drive.
Okay. This name change resolution was originated by Kraft and Toll on behalf of University Student Living, who is in the process of developing student housing at the south end of our current Paris Drive. Which is, is going to be right down here. And they, they proposed a number of different names, which we were kind of working with them to get it through the Street Naming Committee. When Chris Brown pointed out to me that the university's long-term plans were to continue Stadium Drive from up by the stadium, obviously, down through this area, and to terminate at Martin Luther King. So it seemed like a perfect opportunity to go ahead and rename Stadium Drive at South Garland Avenue currently to the north of Martin Luther King, and then continue it across Martin Luther King, renaming the existing Paris Avenue. That way, traffic on Martin Luther King will have the same street name on both sides of the street. That's, are there any more questions?
What questions do we have? Okay. What public comment do we have on this? Hello, Mr. Johnson, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Mike Johnson, representing the University of Arkansas, also here as a citizen. We very much appreciate our relationship with both the school board, the school district, and the city. And I might, just a small correction. The missing piece is, remains Virginia in between these two sections of road, and we have worked with the city to place that on the master street plan of the city. So it's a collaborative effort with the university and the city to do that, hopefully sooner rather than later. But I might add, as a civil engineer, what this does to an area that's extremely confusing, Paris, Garland, Clinton, California, Virginia, Stone, Stadium, within about two and a half blocks, really starts to clean it up. And as we put the master street plan in place and do that little piece of Virginia, widening it out, adding sidewalks, I think it's going to make that whole area a lot nicer and make people, a lot easier for people to find their way up on the stadium, down Martin Luther King in that area. So we support it very much and appreciate it, and we congratulate the school district on the new Bulldog Drive.
Thank you. All right. Any other public comment on this? Okay. Bring it back to the council. Comments, questions?
I'll just say that that street's a lot closer to the stadium than it is Paris, so I think it's a really good idea.
You stole my line.
If you'd have wrote it down, I wouldn't have stole it. I didn't know it, I'm sorry. Great minds. And I like the idea of having Razorback Road running on one side of the stadium all the way down, and Stadium running on the other side of it all the way down. I think it'll make it easier for people, and it makes sense, so.
That's a motion to pass a resolution.
That's a motion to pass a resolution.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments from the council on this? Again, I want to thank the University of Arkansas, we have a great partnership with them and the school district, so it's a veritable love fest tonight, anyway.
Mayor, this is the first time I've, we've experienced our new staff, and we're with the maps and all, I think you did a really nice job of explaining and showing, showing us the illustrations and all. Thank you. I need those really good illustrations to know what we're talking about, so thanks a lot.
All right. Any other final comments? All right. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Okay. Now, back to what will be number four now, Federal Police Department Policies. Resolution approving Federal Police Department Policies 1.2, .1, Limits of Authority; 1.3, .1, Use of Force; 12.1, .1, Direction; 12.2, .1, Policies; Procedures and Rules of Development and Review Procedures; 26.1, .2, Harassment Discrimination in the Workplace; 41.1, .1 Patrol; 42.1, .1 Criminal Investigations; 41.2, .11, Use of Department Vehicles; 44.1, .1 Juvenile Operations; 61.1, Traffic Enforcement; 6.1, .11 DWI/DUI; and 61.3, Traffic Direction and Control. All right. Chief?
As you all know, we've been in the process the last couple of years of moving toward CALIA certification or accreditation. This is the next step in that endeavor. These are 12 policies that all meet CALIA standards and all the requirements that are in those policies. Eight of these policies are policies that we currently have, that we've just tweaked in some minor way to make sure they meet the CALIA standard or what the current best practice is. Our policies haven't actually been updated since 1999, so obviously, things have changed since 1999 in some of our policies that we had previously. And then four of them, which are Criminal Investigations, Traffic Enforcement, DWI, and Traffic Direction, are completely new policies that are required by CALIA to have.
All right. What questions do we have, Chief, on this?
I have a question.
Get it.
Can you say the ti, your timeline, like, what's your goal for that certification?
Thank you, and I finally can. We actually have a mock assessment set up for, I believe it's July 8th and 9th, and that's where some people from CALIA come in. They run through the accreditation, but it's kind of just like a trial, and they point out what you still need to do, what you've got to fix, what you've got wrong, and then we have the real thing scheduled for November of this year.
What's that mean, real thing?
Where they actually come in, and you either pass or fail. You either become a creditor or you do not.
It's the test, they get tested. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else from anybody? Okay. I need a motion and a second. Any public comment on this, I'm sorry. All right. Bring it back to the council, we have a motion and a second. Any final comments from council? Sondra, would you please call the row?
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Okay. Number five. Repeal and Replace 178.04 Outdoor Mobile Vendors. An ordinance repealing, replacing 178.04 Outdoor Mobile Vendors Located on Private Property of the Code of Fayetteville to Provide for a Variance Procedure. Kit?
Be ordained by the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1. At the City Council, City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, hereby repeal Section 178.04 Outdoor Mobile Vendors Located on Private Property of the Code of Fayetteville, and an actual replacement, Section 178.04 Outdoor Mobile Vendors Located on Private Property, as represented and presented and attached in Exhibit A, which is incorporated herein as if set out word for word.
Okay. Chairman?
Paul and Kenyon actually asked me to draft something along with Mr. Williams. I don't know if you want to begin the conversation.
Okay.
Can you just go into the staff report?
Paul and Kenyon, would you like to start us off?
Well, it's evident that we do have some vendors that add to the character of our city that are in need of some help in order to keep their, their mobile merchant establishments in an area more than the restricted days that we have currently. Specifically, we have the area at Trenton and College Avenue where we have the Airstream trailers, and we want to protect that because we find that is an attractive alternative to an area of College Avenue that needs merchant activity. We also have seasonal vendors, such as our snow cone vendors, that we're approaching the warm summer days, and so this will allow them to apply for a longer period of time to not have to move their stands, and this will be easier for them to go to the Planning Commission to get the approval. So it's just a tool that allows an opportunity for merchants to apply for an extended time to keep their mobile merchant activity going. So that, that's basically what we have here.
I just got back from Austin, and anyone that's been in Austin knows that this is a real, real big thing down there. I think our sign ordinance might prevent it from being quite as gaudy as it is in some locations down there, but, 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 you know, and I do understand that people that have fixed commercial buildings might object to the competition, but I think it's fun, and I think those that are situated there on College are just, you know, really cute, and they fill in a spot that's just been vacant, and so I, I think it's, you know, I think it's a good opportunity to offer something kind of different and unique, and keep Fayetteville funky and all that, so I support it.
Sarah?
I would just like to thank Mark for thinking of it.
Okay. Bobby?
I would do. I think that's the essence of democracy, Alderman, when you have a, you have a constituent that needs help, and here you come. With that, I would move that we pass the ordinance.
I got to have a motion and a second go to the second reading. Y'all changing gears on me here tonight. First of all, we have a motion and a second go to the second reading. Is there any public comment on this? Yes, Mayor?
I'm Cynthia Morris, and I'm the new landlord of what we will be calling the Yacht Club on College, because those are land yachts, the Airstreams are. We purchased it March 1st, and to make improvements to the lot, I want to add some landscaping, I needed to add a water meter, and to do things like that, and to attract customers that have invested upwards of $30,000 in their Airstream, they needed to have a little longer timeframe. So I really appreciate this. I think this could bring better vendors that decorate their Airstream cute, and we want it to be top quality. We, we promise we will keep that funky for Fayetteville. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a, any other public comment on this? We have a motion and a second go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Boudrea?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
An ordinance repealing and replacing Section 178.04 Outdoor Mobile Vendors Located on Private Property of the Code of Fayetteville to Provide for a Variance Procedure.
Any final comments from the council? Matthew?
Well, I'm glad that we're doing this. I do want to say that there's more to do, I think, to increase the food vendor economy in Fayetteville right now, because they have to rely on an extension with a conditional use permit. It's really not the kind of guarantee that a potential vendor needs in order to get into the business. So we're working on a more comprehensive ordinance that addresses the issues that come up whenever you start to issue permits with a longer timeframe, so look forward to that.
Okay. Any other comments from the council? Sondra, would you please call the row?
Boudrea?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
So we're working on a more comprehensive ordinance that addresses the issues that come up whenever you start to issue permits with a longer timeframe, so look forward to that.
Okay. Any other comments from the council? Sandra, would you please call the row?
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any announcements?
We have Ward Two, bulky waste this weekend, I believe. I hope I'm correct. Someone can...
You did.
That's right.
So if you have an old refrigerator or a couch, it's an ideal time to bring it to the, the locations are at the Church of Christ.
Yes, I have, it is this Saturday, May 15th. It is, oh, wait, sorry, May 5th. It is at the Church of Christ at 310 West Center Street, also at Woodland Junior High School, 7 East Poplar Street, in front of the parking lot. And just to echo that, this is a time when you see maybe staff, students in particular, maybe leaving apartments or houses during the end of term, and so we do ask that if you have anything that is a bulky item, rather than it being in a sidewalk, rather it being in front of a dumpster or roll-off or other services, can't get to do their contractual work, that they do bring it this Saturday. And we're also advising people, if they have any mold items left over from the flooding areas, that's not good for your home, that this is a place that they can also do it because it might not be recycled goods.
I'll remind people that the EcoPassport events go through the 14th. There's some good stuff in Ward Four.
It's nomination committee time again for us to announce that there are many openings on the boards and committees for our city, so I would encourage all of you to check this out on our website or call your alderman, and we'll give you a list of the openings. We want, we like to have many, many of our constituents applying for our openings on boards and commissions. Thank you.
Anybody else? Any comments?
Just a few more to remind you that the League of Women Voters is the one that does the issue forums or candidate forums for the city, an objective entity. That will be tomorrow night here in this same chamber, starting at 7:00. Doug Thompson has volunteered to be the moderator of that. The May 15th date is a date that the Urban Forestry Advisory Board Landscape Competition due date, so there's more information about that on Access Fayetteville, but they are announcing a competition for best examples of sustainable landscapes, and then they have an award for one residential property and one commercial property. Also, yep, that's it, I think, because you announced the others. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you all very much. Good job tonight.